Since we did not do the flag of invocation in our executive session, we'll do that now. So we'll call the regular city council meeting full order. And I would ask for those who wish to participate, council, perhaps for indication of president of the leaders.
That was perfect. You know, thank you for bringing us here together this evening to the business of this great city. Please be with us in every decision, every word, every thought that we have, that it be for the sole purpose of making this place the best it can be for our citizens, for all those around this community. We ask you to be with us tonight and protect all the families represented here. We think of our first responders in every fashion, and we just ask you to lift them up and shield their families and be with them on every call, on every phone call. Thank you for the council members who dedicated themselves to doing the business of this city, dedicated themselves to making it the best it can be. We ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus.
Amen. A pleasure to lead you through.
The United States of America and your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you, pleasure to see you. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2021, regular city council meeting on the April 20th, special city council meeting. There's such a motion.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. Presentations on our agenda this evening. We have confirmations up first. I wanted to welcome the student government who is here from Coker. S K. S K, hey, there you are. S K, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Do you want to come up and introduce your governing body? I think just a few minutes to talk about college and speech.
Yes, I would love to. So unfortunately, not all of my, our governor or my executive board can make it, but we do have two here. So Catherine Kane, she's our director of student affairs. And over here, we have Robert Bench, who is our director of registered student organizations. And so I just wanted to say a few things to everyone here. It's great to see all of us in the community. I'm from a larger, larger city in Raleigh, North Carolina. And one of the great things that I learned over my past two, three years being here in Hartsville is just the sort of impact that you can have, the tangible impact that each individual can have here, that you simply can't feel at a much larger school. So one of the great things that I ran my platform on was investing in productive and collaborative relationships, both on and off campus. That means everyone sitting in this room today, council, and each and every one of you, whichever organization or anything you represent. So one of the things that we want our school to be able to do is have each and every one of you come onto our campus, whether it's through a small business fair, whether it's tailgating for our sporting events, or any of these sort of things, so that you can reach out to the students coming in, and especially during welcoming week, which is around August 21st, where you can come in and really introduce what Hartsville is made of, what Hartsville is available, or what is here in Hartsville that is available to students. And with that, we understand the sort of economic impact our students have on the city. So if small businesses, if the city, if we're all able to come out here, you know, introduce ourselves, say, hey, this is what we are, this is what is available to you all, if we are able to do things like continued discounts at different restaurants, there is a lot, a lot of things that we can do together. And I want to make sure that with me as SGA president alongside my executive board, which is on the pamphlet that I handed out to you all, we want to make sure that there is a point of contact over at the university side on the student's perspective. Because there are things that students can do that administration, you know, you have to go through the bureaucracy, but you can reach right out to me. I put my number, I put my email. Reach out to me and let's make something happen. Let's work out the logistics. Let's get the community onto Coker's campus again. And that's something that I truly stand by, that's something that I ran my platform on, and that's something that I look forward to committing, and something that's in my vehicle. So that's all I have to say.
Anything else to ask S K? Same thing?
I bow to tailgate. S K has been everywhere. I have seen him in Rotary, I have seen him all over town and everything. He's been well done, so congratulations again.
I think you've heard of Baby B for your pride.
Mm-hmm.
That's the child.
And this is not the last you're going to see it, you're going to see it around us. So prepare for it.
Well, we're also glad to meet your counterparts and so thank you all for taking the time to come with them. And our promise to you was, it doesn't have to be Tuesdays, you know, first or second Tuesday of the month. You know our whole team, and having a relationship with the university is probably the most important thing. In your presentation, a lot that you put that in the United States that students spend over $27 billion in nonessential items, and I couldn't, couldn't help but thinking how essential those nonessential items are for this community. So thank you all for investing and keeping that money.
Thank you all.
We wish you all, you'll pass along our, congratulations to the rest of your executive team as well.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Peace Officers Memorial Day. Who is going to be receiving this, Madam Clerk? You got, you got one. Would you like to come up, sir? Sure. I'd ask that the entire council present this in light of what we're recognizing. So I'll read it really quickly to everybody else. Whereas the members of law enforcement agency of the city of Hartsville, come on up. Quite essential model in safeguarding rights and freedoms of citizens of Hartsville. It's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that law enforcement officers should recognize their duty to serve the people of this community and protect them against violence and disorder. Whereas the law enforcement officers of City Hartsville, City of Hartsville unceasingly provide a vital public service. And we're proclaiming May the 15th as Police Officer Memorial Day. And we want to thank you for putting yourself in harm's way to keep everyone else safe. Thank you. Thank you again. And if you'll extend that to the rest of the department as well. Now, we mentioned, since it is Police Officers Memorial Day, we do have an officer that we lost in the line of duty many years ago.
He listed as Dobson.
He listed, that's right. He, he was a patrolman?
He was.
Absolutely want to recognize that as well. And thank you again for your service. The next item that we have is Building Safety Month. Shannon, I don't know if this is news for me. Why don't we all, we're going to end the follow-up here anyway, why don't you all come and join me again, because we've got one more after this that everybody want to be a part So I'll let you do the honors, if you would, and tell us about Building Safety Month.
Okay. So the city of Hartsville has declared May its Building Safety Month, and ICC, the International Co-Council, they like our cities and groups to be involved. It not only helps keep the public safe, homeowners, commercial buildings, people who frequent these commercial buildings, it also keeps our insurance rates down. So the city of Hartsville has an ISL program for commercial and residential. So recognizing building safety helps with insurance things.
If you present that to her, I'm just glad that we're recognizing this month after Councilor Nagy did his roofing project. All right, so thank you. If you'll give that to your department as well. The last one, which everybody wants to be up here for, is Water Safety Month. So I think before we come into, you're the guests, before, before we get into Water Safety Month, I think the one thing that's on everybody's mind is, can you tell us again when the season is starting and anything else you want to say about it?
Yes, so we are opening this weekend. So exciting day is opening on Saturday for our 2020 and 2021 season pass holders. We did extend 2020 season passes to June 30th of this year with the option from July 1st to July 15th to renew for the rest of the season at a discounted rate. We haven't announced those numbers yet, but they will come out as we're getting into the summer. So if you want to come in for Saturday, you need to email us, because we are almost booked up for Saturday. If you want to come on Sunday, those are available online. And then we will be weekends only and Memorial Day until June 11th.
Anything new at the park you want to tell us about?
We are opening a new kitchen. We're very excited, a full-scale kitchen. Everything will be at Kraken's Kitchen. It is beautiful. It will not be open this weekend, but hopefully by next weekend, we will be full running. But our food trucks, the galley, and low tide will be open this weekend.
Any new food items?
We have some very good pizzas coming, churros, funnel cake fries, a lot of new desserts we're excited to try out. So come out and check it out.
So I want to present this. We wish you a safe summer, for sure. No accidents, you know, everybody's taken care of, and thank you all for what you're doing to make your water park so successful. So Water Safety Month, ladies and gentlemen, your Neptune Island crew. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Come on back.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that's it for confirmations. Now we have public comments. Anna McLean.
Okay, okay. I know, I will, I know you know my name, but I write it kind of like sometimes.
It's all right.
I apologize for my bar, but I have to stop while I'm going to get to really practice, but I know you know that's no excuse.
Bob's pizza was with you.
Well, he's not warm enough. But I just wanted to come before you tonight, and I guess I want to start off by letting you know, I've studied this ordinance and the emergency ordinance. And one of the things that mostly stood out to me is the section where it says that, I guess it's the sixth, whereas down, the COVID cases continue to grow in the state. Well, according to the CDC, they've been on decline since January of 19. And, you know, I'm not here to say wear a mask or don't wear a mask, but I do take issue with the government requiring its citizens to wear a mask. And, you know, what's also very interesting to me in here is that it says that, you know, wear at public meetings where one, where it's, where it's necessary. It doesn't say that at all when you're in a restaurant or any of the other places where people are required to wear face covering. So, you know, I've seen your response that you should love your neighbor, and while I believe that that is true and valid, it is not, I do not think it's the government's responsibility to tell me how to love my neighbor. And so I recognize that this ordinance is going through June. I'm here to ask you not to renew it again. I think, you know, where it talks about the number of cases in South Carolina declining since January, you know, that really doesn't, that, that doesn't have anything to do so much with Darlington County even, because as I learned today from Jacob Morpheus, there are two students right now in all of Darlington County School District who have been, who have COVID. There's one employee, one staff member with COVID, and there are 23 quarantined cautious, precautionary reasons. So, you know, and in addition to that, there's been, I called the police department to find out, because I was curious, there's been one citation issued in all of the last year. So I'm wondering if this ordinance is symbolic of, you know, or if there's something, if you're going to require something, I don't know why we're spending time on this, if you're not going to require it, or you are going to require it, but at the end of the day, I do not think it's the government's place to be requiring citizens. It's, I'm here because it's time. You know, it's been a year at this point. I didn't come for the first one, I didn't come for the renewal, but I'm here to ask you not to renew it again, because at the end of the day, I believe it's the individual's choice on how to protect their health. Amen.
Thank you.
And that's all I have to say about that.
So as it turns out, apparently the governor just issued an order as well tonight.
Yes, he did.
What's the governor?
The governor.
Oh, no, what is the order?
Oh, you want to, you got one here, buddy?
He basically lifted Empowering Parents to Decide on Masks in Schools, Restricts Local Masks Mandates, and prohibits vaccine passports. Just like.
What'd you say?
Oh, that's okay. So the governor just released another order, Empowering Parents to Decide on Masks in Schools, Restricts Local Mask Mandates, and prohibits vaccine passports. So that just came out today. Good statement.
Yep.
That's good. I want to call on you guys to follow this lead, because I know that, you know, he's said a lot of things, and really, the businesses can still choose to do masks if they want to do that. I have no problem if I'm walking into a business and they require masks, I can choose not to go in there if I don't want to. I do not approve of city council requiring the citizens here to wear masks.
So, yeah, so thank you. You know, I, I really appreciate you taking the time to, to express those concerns. It would be, it'd be nice if we didn't even have to have any of those ordinances in the first place. Like you said, that grown people could act responsibly and say, so thank you for that. Everybody, any questions for Hannah? Okay. Oh, thank you. All right, so any other, no other public comments? Okay, so we will move into monthly departmental update. Shannon?
Is there a question?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll try to make this as painless as fast as possible, since we have a lot of ambitious agenda tonight. I am over the Navigator, and I'm a development, and Hartsville Regional Airport in Grants. And I get to work with an amazing team. Brenda, Corinne, and Christopher are awesome to work with. They make my job a lot easier. The Navigator guides, supports, and cultivates economic development efforts of the city through providing excellent customer service and a one-stop-for businesses, development, or developers and property owners. So under the Navigator, Economic Development, Planning and Zoning, Code Enforcement, Commercial and Residential Promoting, Business Licensing, and Flood Plane Management. And we also manage the Safe Field Contract, which is our building code official, and his inspectors. If you'll see the picture on the right-hand side of the slide, that is our board. So if you've ever walked past the Navigator and you've wondered, what is all that writing on the board? All of the red are commercial, and all of the blue are residential. And this year, as opposed to last year, we now have the right side of the board in blue. Those are all new homes being built. So the development going on is quite, a lot more than it was last year. And I just have a picture of our latest development, Dockin and Strubby's are launched, and also a subdivision.
Oh, so that makes more sense. I thought particularly it's going behind the. It's going at the end of the call, sorry.
At the end of subdivision.
And we have some laying back there.
Behind the subdivision advance.
It's actually.
We can go to the airport now. So our airport, have, has all the councils seen the new term of building?
Same since. Very hard was up. Struggle.
While we're taking one tour, we like to get. We are probably 99% through just a few little punch list items. We had our airport commission meeting out there last night. We're gonna, we're looking at June 7th to have our ribbon cutting, and that's going to be pretty awesome. We may have Shell Air Force Base to come and a few other surprises. And our FBO, we also manage our FBO contract with Rise Aero. Mark DeFields has done amazing things. We're, he's an FAA certified training center. So right now, there are four instructors and seven student students who are in training to be pilots. And the FAA visited last week to do a monitoring of the training facility and instructors, and they'll be back next Monday to finish up and offering recommendations. So for our capital improvements plan, we need to resurface our runway within the next year or so. We need to have a painter. However, we get that painter, I'm not sure, but that's the vision. You've got to dream it to have it.
There's a collection jar outside.
And then hopefully, one day, roadway extension, so we would like to extend it out at least five and a half feet. And it's like, and I just wanted to include a few special projects that I worked on the last year. Of course, you guys know the Vision 2030 comprehensive plan, then the All American City Combat Campaign, where we utilized 154,500 to help 38 small Hartsville businesses. 76% were female and minority owned. And then I also got to work on the CARES Act, Phase One and Two, to help reimburse us for COVID-related, related costs. So we got both of those reimbursements as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will add this with Shannon. So she came into that airport mid-construction, so she was able to take, tackle that, and we are at 99% because of the work that you're doing on it, so that's great. Shannon, what's the largest type plane that can land out there now during our runway? Like, what can be there?
Sample, you mean, or just?
Mills jet's too large, I understand that, but what?
I don't know the specific type of plane, but I've seen a few large ones out there.
Can, can Sonoco land a plane out there?
Yes.
Their plane will land, yes.
They have the.
And.
All dead yet, can't.
Okay.
And helicopters are landing out there a lot more now, too.
Not only because they land there, they could also stay there. Review, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Did want to mention Bob's Harley Asom, and you've been a part of that whole project, so thank you for what you've done to help shepherd that through. Shannon, nice work. It's, it's hard from the back and see what we have. And even, I mean, I was kind of hoping we would have a ceremonial burn, you know, that old building down, but they, they even fixed that. It's almost like, but they didn't do that first, we wouldn't have the challenge.
It might be crushed up soon.
Oh, good, okay. It's likely still mine.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It was too much to move it. We wanted to try and save it, and this is the trailer, the lovely single wide out there. That is, it was known of cost effective to move it, the way they've been, so it's going to be part of the contract needs to be demolished. So you want to symbolize for yourself something at a certain time later.
Sounds good. But what, you know, that's, that airport is certainly something to be proud of for this city.
It's a gateway that we want to use more for economic development and things like that.
Especially with being up the front door of Sonoco, that's important. You know, their, their clients and customers can be brought right in, and that's, that's a good first, first impression. Okay.
I want to make one up another name.
Please.
Do you see the size of a grant for that project? Is that correct?
That's correct. A 500,000 NCAI on it, and then a 666,666 FAA grant.
Okay.
I don't pressure.
And Speaker, Speaker Malloy.
Yes.
Speaker Lucas, they're at that presentation out there, so we would not want to talk that much about the airport and not make them.
Oh, for sure.
We would like to invite them to the regular coming in.
Absolutely. Okay, anything further? Then we'll move into new business. Item six on the agenda's first reading of ordinance, 4411. Man, I'm sorry.
Manager comments. You want to hit me?
We're not.
Item five, if it goes from four, five, six, it's a four six.
Oh, no, yeah, come back to that later.
I don't have a comment to get there. So just two quick things. Bay 18, special election for the District One, which we do have our sole person on deck, but there's an election Bay 18. And then the other item is, we do, we have ready to hire for our Public Services Director. So I will be introducing him in the June meeting, by his name is Wesley Miles. He comes from the city of Pageland. He was actually here before, not in the job that I tried to get you before. So he, he hit everything that needed him to hit, and so we're very proud to have him coming aboard, and we're very excited to get him started, and he's rare to go to it. So we have to introduce you guys at the next council meeting, but we're very excited about that.
And it?
That's it.
Items for the consent agenda, will you review that objection? New business, the first, item six on the agenda's first reading of ordinance, 4411, manual publish.
Sir, it's first reading ordinance, 4411, and ordinance to adopt in budget for the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022.
Can you permit reading by title and presentation, city manager, Chair on table motion up?
Mr.
Mayor, I make a motion to be adopt ordinance, 4411.
Sir.
Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. First reading is passed. Congratulations to you.
I brought my passport.
Bob asked me, he said, are we going to be here for seven more hours, or do I need to get a replacement? And I said, no, sir, we work for everything. Budget is good.
Only to get you a replacement.
Oh, me a replacement. I was going to go on fire for your night.
You wore it up.
I know, my eyesight is barely terrible, because I couldn't even see that. Item seven on the agenda's first reading of ordinance, 4412, manual.
It's due annex approximately 3.95 plus or minus acre. Harso land tax back number 0360001066.
Okay, you permit reading by title and presentation, ordinance, 4412, Chair on table motion up? I make a motion to adopt top ordinance, 4412. Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. Item eight, yes, have, item eight on the agenda's first reading of ordinance, 4413.
That is due annex approximately 1.05 plus or minus acre, parcel land tax back number
Can you permit reading by title and presentation, ordinance, 4413, Chair on table motion up?
Which may have been motioned, we got it, ordinance, 4413.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. Item nine on the agenda's first reading of ordinance, 4414.
It's an approval to lease a portion of the alleyway at 120 South 10th Street from trust company.
Okay, permit reading by title and presentation, ordinance, 4414, Chair on table motion up?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance, 4414.
Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. Item 10 on the agenda's Resolution 3-21-01.
So there's appointing new director to the Board of Directors of the Hartsville Public Development Corporation and other knowledge related agencies.
Chair on entertaining a motion to his act? Some move with Bryson Callaway with that precedent.
Second.
Is a motion in seconds, any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Those vying has had. Let the Madam Clerk cut the record reflect that Bryson did not accuse himself, therefore he voted for himself.
You heard his deep voice over it.
Saw his fingers crossed. You, you'd be a wonderful representative, and we appreciate you being willing to serve that capacity.
Thanks.
If there is, there is nothing further, okay, then thank you all for taking the time to come tonight. S K, you missed your opportunity to talk about student government discounts at the water park. You might want to come back and work on that. Non-mention would be a great summer job, so spread word. Anyway, thank you all for coming, and if there's nothing further, we stand.